We have a quorum. As there are, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes as listed?
The motion to approve the minutes for two as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded on question. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Now, a clerk, any correspondence?
There was email correspondence from Rosella Nakora and Mary Barrett.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the first section? Thank you very much. Let's get to the report for the superintendent.
Thank you, President Alvery, for the report of the superintendent. Tonight, my team and I will be presenting an informative report for the board on key data points for our district. This is important information for the administrative team and the board to be aware of, especially as it pertains to the budget development process. So, I wanted to remind everyone, we haven't visited this in a while, but I wanted to remind everyone of the mission of the district, which is that the Valley Street Union Free School District 13 offers our lifelong learners a robust curriculum through the partnership of home, school, and community. We expose our children to important literature and ideas, to master fundamental skills, and develop problem-solving and critical thinking skills. We promote social responsibility, encouraging students and staff to set high personal goals. And for several years now, we have had three main goals for the district: high-quality curriculum and instruction, leadership and innovation, and systems thinking. So these three goals really drive the work that we do in the district. In terms of curriculum instruction, in our district, we have a regular replacement cycle of our four main instructional programs. We have a gifted talent program, a robust offering of after-school clubs, and extracurricular programming. We have job-embedded professional development for our teachers through our district coaching program. Our special education program includes a full spectrum of programming to provide a least restrictive environment and, at the same time, maximizing peer interactions. We have excellent English as a New Language program, along with mental health supports in all four buildings. We have an ever-expanding pre-kindergarten program. We continue to support early literacy with our reading program and also including many programs in the district, including the Hegarty Program, our Super Kids Program, that align with the science of readings. And I think, most importantly, we continue to have a whole-child approach in our district. In terms of our systems, we have, especially the board, has prioritized student and staff safety and has invested budget funding for enhancing safety and security. We are fiscally responsible, staying within the tax cap for the past 12 years. We have a very good record of hiring in the district, always hiring the best teachers. We are invested in strategic capital work, which is basically enhancing our facilities. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the communication on our last slide. And our third goal of leadership and innovation, you've all experienced our wonderful innovation labs, and in fact, we're a one-to-one district. We have some, several robust community partnerships, one with the Nassau Land Trust at Grossman's Farm, and also another strong partnership that has really served us well the past several years is our partnership with the Delphi University. And I think the district has really invested in exceptional leadership team, and we have a very high-performing governance team with the Board of Education in our district.
Good evening. The focus of our budget is on teaching and learning. In a school district, about eighty to eighty-five percent of school districts' budget is spent on salaries and benefits. We spend seventy-five percent of our budget on instructional salaries and benefits, and that's where the money should be spent. We try to attract the best teachers to provide high-quality curriculum and instruction. And you see from the chart, the rest of the budget is spent on debt services, contract expenses, transportation, and our summer rec program.
On this slide, you'll see our total enrollment is 2,045 students, and our support staff, teachers, nurses, custodial support, clerical support, to make our buildings run every day for those 2,045 students. There was a period of time when our enrollment dropped below 2,000, but with the addition of pre-kindergarten classes at Howell Road, we are back above that 2,000 mark. On the next few slides, you'll see some demographic information. This slide is for the district overall. So the pie chart focuses on demographic information from last school year, and the green table to the side is five years ago. So the key takeaway here is the increase in our Asian Pacific Islander population, went from twenty-two percent in 2018, 2019, to thirty percent last school year, and they are currently our largest demographic group. We'll move through the slides. James A. Dever School, we're going to see similar trends. The Asian Pacific Islander population, again, an increase in that demographic group. And while there have been demographic shifts for all groups, really, the key takeaway here is the Asian Pacific Islander increase. Additionally, I wanted to add that all the pie charts have, I think that they're a very nice representation of the diversity in our district. We have very nicely balanced pie charts, and it's a good representation of the diversity of our school community.
Okay, so this is a, four charts, one for each building, showing some of our enrollment trends. And even though, when you look at these four charts, you see some differences. You see at Dever, a little bit of a decline. You see an uptick at Howell Road. You see a pretty big decline at Willow. As Andrea said, our enrollment has been declining. So overall, our enrollment does continue to decline. We've had some shifts. So those shifts across the building can be explained by the increase at Howell Road is due to the past three years, including the pre-K students. So we had seventy-two students, then we had one hundred and twenty-six, and then this year we have an allotment for one hundred and forty-four. You can see on the Wheeler Avenue chart here that this difference is due to shifting, and you see the corresponding decrease here. This is due to shifting the kindergarten from Willow back to their home school, Wheeler. The Dever enrollment and the Willow enrollment are about 420, and the Wheeler and Howell enrollments are sitting at around 600, a little bit over 600 for both of those schools right now. So in our, in the current school year, there are approximately at Dever and Willow, two or three classes per grade level. At Howell, there are three classes per grade level, except in kindergarten. Howell has two classes this year. And at Wheeler, there are either three to five classes per grade level, and that's a difference if you go back to 2018. In 2018, Willow had about two classes a grade level as compared to the current three. Willow is showing a very small uptick in their overall enrollment over the past several years. So that's the only building that has seen an increase in enrollment, is a very slight increase. But Dever and Howell are trending downward. Howell used to have three or four classes at a grade level. As I said, now their current kindergarten is two classes, so that's a pretty significant difference. Wheeler used to be at four or five classes a grade level, and they're generally down to three or four classes a grade level. So the overall message with enrollment is that the district enrollment is declining, but we've increased our enrollment due to bringing on an additional grade level, which is pre-kindergarten. And some of the other shifts in enrollment you see at the building level are due to shifting students, either pre-K or the kindergarten moving from Willow to Wheeler. And this next slide shows you, these are the entering kindergarten classes in the district since 2010. So you can see what I'm talking about in terms of the declining trend. This year is the lowest kindergarten, incoming kindergarten class that we have had since 2010. We did have a very similar kindergarten class in 2018, where exceeds at 225. But the range between our smallest class, which is the current class here, within the past five years goes from 222 to 251, which is about a class full of students. But remember, when you look at this kindergarten class, it's the whole class spread over four buildings. So this is just a small amount of students spread over time. So you can see in this slide that our pre-kindergarten enrollment, which is the current hundred, and there's not, we have a little bit less than 144 students. So if anybody still hasn't enrolled, feel free to call Mr. Maklaski. But you can see that the enrollment in pre-K mirrors the building enrollments. And the next slide, I think, is a slide that many of our parents are most interested in. And this is our average class sizes. So I picked, we've kind of picked this five-year span, but it was also good to look at 2018, 19, as compared to this year, because that, as I showed on that kindergarten slide, has very similar enrollment numbers. And you can see that the class sizes is similar. We do have, in kindergarten, an average class size of about 20 students. In grades one to three, it's slightly lower, at 19.6, and in grades four to six, it's 21.8. The class size guidelines in our district, there are 26 in kindergarten, but in kindergarten can also include a full-day aide. In grades one to three, we max our classes at 25 students, and in grades four to six, we can go up to 30 students. Something that a lot of community members and parents, they say, "How can you have 30 students in a class? That's such a large number. The board should look at changing that." And what I've explained to many people is that those are guidelines. We don't, we can, all of our classes are generally lower than that. I haven't ever seen a class size that approaches 30. And we have to remember, when we look at class sizes, is we couldn't just, we could, if we picked, well, we could, but if we picked a low number for our class sizes in policy, we would reduce our ability to be flexible. And what I mean by flexibility is, in addition to just a number of students, we have to have the space for those classes. So if you go in our, in our buildings right now, we are using almost all available space to keep these class sizes as low as they are. In addition to that, we have been operating in New York State under a tax cap. So if you lowered class sizes, and you saw from Mr. Antoine's slide, that the teaching and learning part of the budget is the biggest part of the budget, that may create a result of having to either cut programs somewhere else or pierce the tax cap. And we don't want to do that. We want to be fiscally responsible. So even though that guideline number seems high, you really generally don't go to that number. And you can see here that our average class sizes are in a very good spot. That doesn't mean that we don't have class sizes of 24 and 25, and generally, when we get to those higher numbers, we do things like offer more support in the class, maybe more reading support, it may be a support with a classroom aide.
Okay, so continuing the demographic snapshot. Poverty rates are listed here. It's interesting to note that they've doubled in less than 10 years. So 2013, 2014, the poverty rate was 21 percent, with 2018, 2019 being 35 percent, and now we're at 42 percent. The good news is, as of November 1st, the USDA expanded access to the federal community eligibility provision, which allows us to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students for the next four years. Cultural diversity, as Mr. Mango talked about before, is evident in the numerous languages spoken throughout our community. Spanish, Urdu, and Punjabi are spoken in nearly equal proportions within the language diversity in our community. This data helps us inform our decision-making. As a district, we provide multiple tools to facilitate communication with our families in need of translation services. Parent Square has an embedded feature that translates into any language. We also utilize Proprio, which is real-time, live, person translation for meetings and parent-teacher conferences. And recently, we've purchased software that instantly translates documents, so we use that for translating evaluations, and just today, a report card. So we're very happy about that. So this slide, multilingual learners are students whose primary language is other than English, and as a result, they are developing proficiency in multiple languages, commonly referred to as English as a new language or E and L. This provided slide illustrates the trend among multilingual learners in Valley Street 13, with the highest number observed in the 22, 23 school year. Notably, this year, we've seen a decrease in these numbers, with a current count of 139 students. This decline is particularly evident in the kindergarten population, and one contributing factor could be the immersive English language experience they get, that students get in pre-K. Each annual count includes multiple, excuse me, each annual count includes multilingual learners who have been part of our educational community since kindergarten, as well as those who have transferred to the Valley Street 13 school district from various locations of the United States and around the world at any point in their educational journey. A student is designated as a multilingual learner or English-language learner until they attain commanding level of proficiency on the NICEISLAP, or an expanding level on the NICEISLAP, coupled with a level three or four on the ELA in the same school year. The timeframe for achieving this proficiency may vary from student to student, from months to years. So the reported figures encompass students progressing from entering to expanding levels of English language proficiency. We offer instructional support for commanding-level students for two years past the time that they achieve that commanding level. So right now, we have, those are known as formerly English-language learners or FELs, and we have 50 students in that category. And this is the demographics with students with disability. The trend line depicted on this slide reveals a consistent pattern of classification rates of special education students within our school district. The flat trending suggests a stable, consistent enrollment of students requiring special education services. While the trend line for classification has remained flat, it's crucial to note that the students' needs have evolved over time. So even though this number has stayed the same, the needs of the students who are coming in, we've increased our sections in those small special classes, and we have a very nice, robust program. So we're proud of our inclusive program, because we bring a lot of our students into their community school, which we're very proud of. So we're able to provide all the services, because we have such a highly qualified and dedicated staff of teachers and related service providers. So again, I say that we're proud of this inclusive education program, because we want inclusion to be the premise of what we do, so that all students are valued for their unique abilities and included as essential members of our school community.
Good evening. Last year, to support our wildly important goal of ensuring that our students read at their appropriate grade levels, we introduced a reading assessment to monitor student progress and tailor instruction to their individual needs. Since it was our inaugural year of implementing this assessment, we devoted additional resources to provide professional development on it. As a result, we now have greater confidence in the accuracy of the data, and it has given us a solid foundation, as indicated by the blue lines on the charts. Teachers are currently formulating wildly important goals for their students, and they will be able to track their progress towards these goals using the data from this assessment. In analyzing the New York State assessment data for school years 2018, 2019, and 2022, 2023, we are closely monitoring the needs of current fifth-grade students and assessing the supports required. The gaps observed in third-grade performance can be attributed to students taking the New York State assessment for the first time. Apart from that, the performance of most grades is generally in line with regional standards. To address specific grade levels, we will focus on providing professional development tailored to grade five. Historically, this grade is a more difficult assessment, otherwise, most grades, again, are close to the region. When examining NWEA data for the school years 2018, 2019, and 2022, 2023, we also observed a pattern of consistency. In the majority of grade levels, our performance consistently surpasses the national norm, indicating that our students perform, that our students are performing as expected for grade-level standards.
So we also wanted to share all the robust ways that we communicate in the district. We have our district website, which has, we have our district website, which has all of our main information on it. We also have, on the district website, a community notification. So if you're not a parent in the district, parents get our Parent Square communications, but community members can sign up on the website, and you will get notifications, just like our parents do. So please feel free to go to the district website on the bottom right and sign up for the community notification. We do have social media, where we like to share a lot of what's going on in the classroom, on Twitter and on our Facebook account. Parent Square has really been a home run for everyone. As Dr. Dunn said, you can have the information translated in any language that you like. And we also have been streaming, if you haven't noticed, we have live-streaming the regular board meeting, and we've also begun streaming the committee meeting. And you can find all of those videos on our Video on Demand library, which is also a link on our website. In addition, I hope you tune in this month, because there will be beautiful concerts. If you can't make it to the school, you can watch those on the Video on Demand. Also, not listed on here, we have our elementary newsletters that go out, our regular press releases. I hope you see those on our, they're posted on our website in the Valley Street Herald, and we've had a few things published in Newsday. Most recently, we have published a promotional video sharing the highlights of our district. That can be found on the main page of the website. And I'd also like to point out on the website, if you're there, take a look at your Tax Dollars at Work webpage, which really shows how the district has spent funds over the past several years. So I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for their support, also the community for their support of our school district, and everything that you do for our districts. And I would like to thank the team, Mr. Mango, Director of Technology and Innovation, Mr. Antoine, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Ms. McIntosh, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and Dr. Dunn, our Executive Director of Special Services. And we'll take, if there are any questions from the board?
Hello? Dr. Dunn, your data regarding special education, that number, that the number of individuals who registered and then were sent elsewhere for schooling, or were out of the, everything that's in our list?
That's the total number of our students. That trend line is all of our students, whether they're out of district or in district, because they're still our students, they're at HOS's place. We have very few children in that, too, that are at HOS's place.
So the numbers are everyone, whether they're in our schools or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the same slide, actually. We're talking about inclusive atmosphere for all students. What's, is there a point where, where the assessment that's done, I understand everybody being inclusive, but at some point, isn't there a point where some students may need a specialized school or specialized instruction?
Yes, that's, well, anybody that has IEP gets specialized instruction. That's the nature of an IEP. There are students that need to be in a different placement because of their needs, so all those decisions are made at a committee, where parents are included and part of the decision-making. There's another part to your question, inclusivity. So even here, we have small special classes, but we also try to have activities so that they're with their typical peers, or neurotypical peers. So we'll have students participate in some type of activity. They'll go to a gym class, and they'll do special activities together. There's also buddy lunches. So we try to expose children to as many opportunities to be with their typical peers as possible.
Oh, okay. So I just, it's, in other words, it's not, they're, we'll never be educationally disruptive. It's always like a more of an extracurricular inclusion type of thing.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
We'll never be educationally disruptive to other students. It will always be more like a, a social, or...
So it's a combination of both. We have students that are in a small special class that might benefit from being instructed in mainstream class. They might have high strengths in math. So it's not that they're only spending time with their neurotypical peers in extracurricular activities. We look for the academic opportunities as well. So we have a lot of times, students that will, they'll mainstream, what we call mainstream for art, because that might be something that they have a strength in. So we look at those individual needs to make those decisions. And again, all those decisions are made at the committee meeting with the parent.
Trustee Menel?
Just, just talk.
It's all a matter of...
Oh, you just talked, I was, voice activated. Hello, okay. What would you say, that's excellent, a lot of information you gathered and gave to us. What would you say the teacher-student ratios are across the district?
We don't, I don't have that information. I wouldn't want to guess.
I do notice that in, on the website, there are some classes we have two in that class. And we have a total of 214 teachers, with a total enrollment of 2,045. I mean, so if you just do the simple division, comes out to nine students per teacher. But, but, you know, but you just gave us the average class sizes, so that can't be the actual ratio. So that's why I'm trying to figure out, what is the actual teacher-to-student ratio? It comes out to 9.4 if you just do the simple division behind. Obviously, right, we agree that that can't be the number.
So different classes have different class sizes. We have some classes where there's one teacher and six students. We have other classes where there's one teacher and 20 students. We have other classes where there's two teachers and 22 students.
So if you were to figure out what the ratio would be, do you take into account that some classes have two teachers in them?
We could.
Oh. Specifically, in music classes, how many students are in, are given in music class?
So music, the kids go to music, art library, and PE with their class. So however many students are in their grade-level class, they, they get the special class. It's the same size.
Would there ever be a situation, like a music class has 30 or more children in?
Only for, like, full rehearsals, when they have the whole band together.
Okay, so, okay, gotcha. Two more questions. You know, it's great that we have pre-K, and you actually doubled the number of classes offering. Are we moving at all towards providing pre-K to all four school zones? Because I know of families that actually have to drive their child to, you know, Howell, as well as their older children to Willow, and some, and Wheeler as well, have multiple children. Are we moving at all towards providing, you know, equal service to you in the school zones?
So, we have, we have ensured that the schedule enables parents to have... So, we have, we have ensured that the schedule enables parents to have time to get their kids at multiple locations. So the Howell pre-K is on a special schedule to accommodate all the other school schedules. So I just want to, you know, I just want to point that out. I think I've mentioned before that the pre-K program is grant-funded, partially grant-funded, and the remainder of the funding has to come from the general fund budget. Also, in pre-K, you have to have a classroom aide for every 18 students. Otherwise, if you go over 18 students, you have to have two classroom aides. So, right now, I think that it would be cost prohibitive to have pre-K in all four buildings because you can't maximize the classes. So in other words, if I had, if I had 19 students who wanted, you know, were Howell students, and I had 17 students who were at Wheeler, I would have to increase, I would have to have two teachers at Howell because I'm one over. Whereas if we have all the students in one location, we can fill up each class of 18 more efficiently. The other reason that that would be very difficult to have pre-K in the homeschools is that we don't have any space for it right now.
One last question. So fantastic, Wheeler has kindergarten now, I think it's two classes, kindergarten is fantastic, and the old came from Willow. Didn't, from that, from that move of those three classes, didn't that free up space at Willow to provide pre-K at Willow? At least split it up between Howell and Willow, was that a possibility? What happens to that space?
So I mentioned earlier in the presentation that Willow's enrollment has been slightly ticking up, and we talked about the class size guidelines. So Willow's classes on a grade level, historically, where there have been two, have been situations where there have been 43, 44, 45 students. They fit perfectly into two classes. The past few years, those have been going to 52, 53, 54. They need three classes. So a few years ago, there was only two classes on every grade level at Willow. There are currently three classes on every grade level at Willow. So those rooms that went away got filled up with other classes.
So enrollment is actually going up in some of the school zones. As you said earlier, that school, so...
I said overall.
She said overall, but...
It's declining, except at Willow.
Thank you, thank you.
Trustee Menel?
Dr. LaRaca, is it safe to say that every year you do an analysis on how many students we have, the space that we have, where to place people, how many teachers we ought to hire, and break it to the Board?
Yes, that's part of the budget process where we look across the district. We include how many sections we believe we'll need across every grade level, across every building. And then that is used to develop the budget that's presented to the Board.
So this information that you currently provide has been provided to us before, and you will continue to do such disanalyses and present it to the Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Rosso?
Thank you. Is it possible to bring up that literacy data, the at our grade level? I have a bunch of questions on that one. All right, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out here. So the green one is the fall of 2022 would correspond to then the following grade, fall 2023. So, I mean, I'm looking, so if you're looking at grade five, because you look at grade six and say, oh, it went from 11% to 52, but really, it was grade five that took that up there.
Correct.
So then, so that...
That would be a cohort analysis to look at the data that way by following the kids.
Okay, so I mean, at best, five are not above green. Like on everyone, I think our best is 63. It's like, what are we doing on that?
So this is, last year was the first year that we started doing this baseline assessment. And when we looked, we looked at the data in the beginning, the middle, and the end of the year. And when we looked at the data at the end of the year, well, when we looked at the beginning of the year data and toward, and the whole year, we realized that at the upper grades, the results were lower than really kind of what teachers know kids are performing at. And when you get to the upper grades, in a reading test, there's a lot more reading. It takes a little bit more time. And so the upper grade teachers have, have to do a little more nuance. It's not as cut and dry when you're testing a kindergarten or a first grader. So the results you see this year in the blue bar, we feel are much more, a much more accurate representation of where students are at the beginning of the year. The other thing is, when we presented the data at the end of the year last year, Ms. McIntosh looked at the highest reading level within a grade band as a cutoff. So we actually just discussed this morning that we want to, as we're looking at this data and collecting this data, we're looking at different ways to, to analyze it. We really should be looking at the band within the grade as reading on grade level, because there are multiple bands as you go through the grade. So this is just the first snapshot of the beginning of the year, and then we definitely anticipate Ms. McIntosh will be sharing information with the Ed Committee, looking at the remainder of the year.
So will we have like a, you have to know, say, right now, we're at 52% for grade six. Will we know how far the other 50% are? I guess it'll be within a band to say, like, are they, are they like one step just below? Or are they, you know, a whole, a whole sector down?
Exactly what we're looking into. Yeah. So it was kind of our first, last year was our first year looking at this. And now that we've learned more, the teachers have learned more, we've learned more, we're honing in on what the data means. You know, and again, as Ms. McIntosh says, we've been doing this project on a wildly important goal, and our focus is literacy, and the idea is to have all the teachers setting their own goal and working on those individual goals in their classroom this year. And you'll hear more about that, I'm sure, when the principals do their presentation later in the school year.
Thank you.
Trustee Menel?
Okay, based on the information that we received, is this information based on the new institute that we just implemented, you know, last year? Okay, so this, this data is from that?
Yes.
Okay, just one question. I forgot the name, can you share the name?
It's the Fontaine-Sainte-Tanell Benchmark Assessment.
Thank you.
Trustee Rosso?
That, that was actually my first question. So this is, this is the Fontaine-Sainte-Tanell Start of Year Assessment?
Correct.
Is there, is there a reason we didn't compare to the spring of last year, where they left off to now versus fall and fall?
We just didn't want to make the PowerPoint, you know, 100 slides, but we can certainly put together more.
I'm just concerned about the, the gap over summer.
Yes, we can, Ms. McIntosh can take a look at the cohort, cohort information so we can track the students who were in fifth grade into sixth grade, that kind of idea.
Right, well, just, not even, just to see, I guess it would be the same thing, yeah, like, so, where the, where the third graders left off last year as opposed to coming in this year at the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have a couple more questions. Anthony actually hit the one. I was going to ask, do we have markers on how far behind the kids that are not at grade level are? You kind of answered that already. Okay, so any students that were not at grade level at the end of the year last year, were those students referred to like summer school or like a...
So, yeah, so we, that would fall under the Academic Intervention Services Plan, and we, we use, generally use multiple measures. So it's a combination, it's not one test, but that would be one factor. It's also based on the NWA teacher recommendation. But yes, a lot of the students who were below grade level were invited into the summer program. And any student who falls under the benchmark, that's part of the Academic Intervention Plan, which you can see on the district website, they were sent home to the Board as well before they were approved. They would be eligible for services. So again, we have our reading services and our math services for those students.
Okay, so those are like almost, you offer it, and then the parents or the students decide, I'm going to take advantage of that? Type of thing?
Yes, I mean, a parent, so in the school year, anyone who's eligible, the vast majority of kids who are eligible take advantage of that. In the summer, of course, some parents have other plans.
Okay.
And that's something, this, this is a good conversation because it is something that, that program has been paid for in the grand, the past years. So that is something that Mr. Antoine and the team and I have, have on the side as whether that's something we're going to include in the budget this year, continuing those summer academic programs. Because pre-pandemic, we did not have that, we only had that for kindergarten. And now that we have pre-K, those kids get the pre-K program before coming, you know, we didn't have, when we had that kindergarten summer program, we didn't have a pre-K program. So that's definitely something that we're going to talk about, that the Board should talk about in the budget development process.
Is there an actual, do we have an actual marker, like, I don't know, that would be reading at grade level to where a student, would it move up to the next grade? Or is that not, is that something that's kind of...
Very rare, very rare.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we support, we support kids as they go, no matter, you know, no matter what. And then this, you know, reading is a very fluid thing. So especially at the elementary level, kids are, you know, moving forward. Sometimes they move forward multiple, multiple levels quickly, sometimes it takes them longer. And when you're at the lower grades, you're moving up levels much more quickly than when you get to the upper grades. So reading, learning to read is a very dynamic thing, and this is great data. The teachers know best because they're interacting with the child and what, you know, seeing them reading in class and their independent reading books. So, you know, it, it's never just one thing. It's always a combination of information that, that we need to look at. But the good thing is, is that the kids are very successful at the high school. So, you know, it's hard because we're not a K-12 district. So whenever we present data, that's the high school's data, and we usually don't present it here. But we know the performance of our students at the high school level. They're very, very high performing. So you kind of have to remember that when we have our elementary discussions.
Right, I think that's, that's really my main concern.
Yeah.
I, I just said, I saw it the other day. I forget what one said it was on, they did some study, and they basically said, if you're now beginning at grade level by grade three, you're like four or five times as likely to not graduate high school or drop out or whatever. So I'm just, I just want to make sure we're on the right path towards...
That's what we're doing.
Yeah. The last one, question, actually I have two more, I'm sorry. Grade five, we've mentioned that there's always a disconnect for the, the grading. It's a har, more harsh grading. Is there a reason that that's the ease work?
Test tends to be a little harder in fifth grade. We've just seen that historically from the state assessments. The other tough part about the state assessment is that not every child takes the state assessment.
Correct. Oh, but that's received, that's not Fontaine-Sainte-Tanell that, that is like?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, there's three different pieces of data we presented tonight. The benchmark data, the New York State three, four, five, six, NWA math, and then the NWA data. And they're all different, they're very different assessments, three very different assessments. They have different purposes.
Okay, so I'm looking at NW, I'm looking at New York State, yeah. Okay. And then for professional development, how much are we offering the teachers in terms of just getting them, the help they need to, to help the kids advance, in other words? I, I don't like the stuff we offer, is it like 50%, 25%? Is there, do we have that information or...
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure I understand what you're asking.
So just say we offer whatever seminars for professional development? I'm not sure how we lay out the day.
Okay.
Is it like 50% of that day is, all right, we're going to learn and teach math more efficiently, or we're going to learn these strategies for...
Depends, it, it depends. So this year, on Superintendent's Conference Day, which was just on Election Day, there was a variety of offerings. You can go back and look, you know, we have all the things listed. There was a big focus on the new Wonders program because we, well, it's not completely new. We had Wonders, but we re-adopted it, an updated version, and Writing, because we've really been, you know, again, focusing on the new program. So the days are generally tailored to what's happening or something that's new in the district that the teachers need PD on. The coaches can do, in the beginning of the year, the coaches spend a lot of time with our new teachers, supporting them, getting them up to speed on the curriculum programs. And then principals work with them, with the teachers at their faculty meetings on the building goals, which, as we said, this year is really our wildly important goal around literacy. So a vast, a lot of the PD the past several years has been literacy focused. In the past, when we adopted our Math and Focus program, a lot of the PD was focused on math because that's what, you know, that's what the teachers needed assistance with. But that all goes through the Professional Development Committee. The Professional Development Committee is made up of teachers who make recommendations with the Assistant Superintendent, and we survey the teachers to ask them what they're interested in. We've had a lot of tech professional development over the past years. So it's a variety.
Trustee Menel?
Okay.
I have one last question, only because I feel that is important for everyone to understand and know. Regarding the sixth grade students, what is done with the transition to the high school? And what do we do in conjunction with the high school when there is a child that's not needing to standard? If any?
So we, we're able to provide all of our data to the high school district. So basically, we take it out of our management systems and we push it into, you know, tech magic and push it into their systems. So we give our assessment data to the high school, and then they, you know, they have their own AIS plan, they have their own programs for special education. Of course, they meet at the CSE. There's a summer program for the students at the high school. And then we also have, we have a sixth grade committee, a unity committee, and we do, try to do, we've done a lot more in the past several years of having the kids meet and come together as a district before they go to the high school. So, or they may go to different high schools, but this way they can, you know, find out who's going to which school, and they get to know kids because right now, they only see their, either their Willow friends or from each of the buildings. So I think there's a lot of supports in place for the students, yeah.
And as far as the special ed, I articulate with all the chairpeople from the high school district, so we go student by student to talk about what their IEPs look like and what their needs will be so that they can make a plan. We also have on December 14th, which is a Thursday, a separate meeting with all of the Valley Stream Elementary School District and the parents to talk about the transition to high school. And the high school team is there to explain the programs.
Thank you.
Trustee Rosso?
Sorry, Les, but just, I know we said about possibly getting the spring data for this as well. I just, correctly, and I know we can't answer this now, but for future, can we go through maybe, once we see that data, what we're doing to kind of bridge that gap of, you know, of the five students that might not be there, like go into more detail?
So Ms. McIntosh can invite everybody to Education Committee, which is usually where this analysis of like really getting deep into the data that happens at that committee. But we will do, you know, we will provide more reports for the full board.
Thank you, I love bar charts, I just, when you're pulling up to, you're going to get me all day, so, thank you.
We can make more bar charts. Thank you, appreciate the questions of the Board, and I hope that you found this an informative presentation.
Thank you, Judah. Any more in your report?
That concludes Superintendent's report.
Wonderful. Thank you, teams. Moving on to Ed Committee, Vice President Cavallaro.
Make a motion, line item one, amend part times, part times teacher position. He resolved the Board of Education hereby immens position of Gregory Cannon from speech teacher, dot A to one, dot O, on step one and eight, as listed in the motion forwarded to the remainder of the year affected November 29, 2023.
So hold, let me second. Move to the second and all the question. All as a favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
I move on item two, approval of teachers to instruct parent workshop. We resolve the Board of Education hereby approves Christina DeLoro not to exceed fifteen hours. Kristi Taberia not to exceed five hours. And Kathleen Peña not to exceed six hours to instruct parent teacher counseling. Workshop for speech aligned between December twenty-two, three, and May twenty-two, four, break listed in the motion, uh, funded by the sixth eleven plan.
Second. Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move on item three, childcare leave absence first year. To approve the first year childcare leave absence without pay for Fiona Hobbs, special education teacher at the Willow Avenue School, effective Monday, December first, twenty twenty-three, to June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move as a consent agenda, I moves E one through eleven.
Second. Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda carries.
I'm president, I'm also having an update.
Wonderful.
The Education Committee held a meeting on November twenty-first with a primary focus on improvement of writing skills of students in the district. The district has a vision to enhance both the length and complexity of student writing. On Superintendent's Conference Day, teachers in grades two to six engage in professional development sessions centered around the improvement of writing in our district. Teachers in grades K and one receive professional development prior to Conference Day. Additionally, there were workshops addressing writing in various subject areas. In current academic year, students in grades K through six will participate in two writing celebrations. These special events are designed to acknowledge and celebrate the progress and achievements of students in their writing endeavors. These celebrations not only showcase the students' writing skills, but also recognize the dedication and heart of our teachers. Parents will be invited to these celebrations. Furthermore, scheduling committee is set to convene in December to discuss the implementation of block, of block schedules. Block schedules are aimed to provide dedicated time for supportive writing and all core academic subjects aligned with the district's goal of improving student writing abilities. And that, and we.
Thank you. Business Committee, Trustee Farr.
Good evening. I move item one, the Treasurer's Report for September two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move item number two, appointment of a cleaner resolved the Board of Education hereby appoints Edward Becker as a full-time cleaner at the Willow School, Road School, excuse me, for the amount listed in the motion, effective November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, pending civil service clearance and board approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move item three, the real property tax exemption for senior citizens as listed in the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move item four, the real property tax exemptions for persons with disabilities and limited income as listed in the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move item five, the approval of annual, the annual risk assessment plan. The Board of Education hereby accepts the annual risk assessment update pertaining to the internal controls of district operations from Serini and Associates and hereby approves the assessment plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes the business report for the C P.
I have questions for the, for the business committee?
Related to the agenda?
Um, yeah, related to the agenda.
Any specific question that's already been?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, uh, trustee Perle. Um, so the treasurer got behind in submitting the treasury reports, and last month, uh, he put for us to approve the July in office, which we did. Tonight, we're approving the September reports. Um, how come we're not up to speed? How come we don't have the October yet?
That's not a question that should come to me because I'm not that person's manager. I believe you should be asking that question to that person's manager.
So, my, oh, so I can actually give a call to the treasurer?
No, that person's manager, which would be Assistant Superintendent Edmott.
So I'm not allowed to call the treasurer? Okay. Um, let me ask you another question. Um.
So, I'm sorry, Fadelli, you have some questions. Would you like it answered for Mr. Antoine?
I'm sorry, what?
I would like to know the answer too. Would you like Mr. Antoine to answer?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. He has the answer. I thought he asked, talked to George Clary.
So the schedule for the treasurer is that he presents the treasurer's report. It's on a two-month lag. That gives him enough time to make sure that he receives the, um, bank statements and is able to reconcile everything and provide a report. So he is on schedule right now. This is November, and we're approving the September treasurer's report, and that goes, that's just going to follow throughout the year.
Oh, so then he didn't?
So, so what happened was, the beginning of the year, there's always that lag because you're closing out the book. So it's kind of hard to do the treasurer's report in a timely fashion in the month of July and August sometimes. Then he catches up. So then he'll do two months in, in, at one, at one board meeting. And then it's always, so it should always be on that two-month lag.
Okay, okay. Um, the Warren reports for October, it shows that there was a, uh, a withdrawal, one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars for federal withholding. Um, from Dime, the Dime savings account for that period, it shows that there was actual, uh, a debit of a hundred thousand dollars. And, and, oh, is, is that related? Was the hundred thousand dollars that was debited in the Dime account in October, was that for the federal withholding, or did we buy treasury bills in October at all?
No. So there was, okay. There was a personal matter that resulted in a payment to, a late payment to the, um, to the, the I R S. And that's what that was.
Oh, so the, in the Warren reports, which was a hundred and forty-one thousand, that had to do with the personal matter?
That had to do with the payment that wasn't made from a previous personal matter.
Okay, so the debit in the Dime account, is that related to that payment?
Yes. It, it, it has nothing to do with the purchasing of treasury bills.
Do we?
That was for a payment
Okay.
that was not made from a previous personal matter.
Okay, so that, all right, so that Dime transaction is related to the withholding?
Withholding of the.
Gotcha. Um, I think that's it. Let me just see one, one second. Uh. Right. Um, excellent, okay, great. I was a little, I was a little weary there because I felt possibly there was a deposit.
Did we, did we purchase treasury bills?
I'm sorry, what?
Did we purchase treasury bills?
No, 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 had to do with the depositories. I mean, you don't.
Are there any other questions to the Business Committee?
Um, I mean, like you don't, and the treasurer doesn't actually create depositories during the year. That only gets done in the reorganization. Correct. I, okay.
If you have a question, you do not have to answer.
Just, I can ask you.
I just didn't hear the question.
Oh.
What was the question?
Oh, yeah, the, the question was like, my, my concern there was sort of, um, but you did clear it up.
Is it a question or concern? Is there a question?
Yeah, well, uh, let me answer this. Um, you, you have, you didn't create a, a new depository, a new bank account, ten, like, you came right out of the Dime, Dime account.
Came out of Dime, no.
Right, so you cleared it up, you cleared it up.
If, if we were going to add a new bank, that would come to the board. We would just add a bank.
Excellent. Right, right. You have to do it through the reorganization. Thank you, George. Thank you.
Madam President, excuse me.
Yes.
May I just ask the board if they have any questions as specific to what Mr. Fadelli just asked? That maybe they can give them to Assistant Superintendent Antoine before the meeting so he is prepared. I don't expect him to know off the bank statements.
I agree with you one hundred percent, and thank you. Mr. Antoine is not, um, under any duress to answer these questions, and he's not confident in his answers. No, I understand that, but, thank you.
Oh, the reason why I brought that up is that.
That's fine. I just wanted to.
No, no, actually, get this up. Um, the reason why.
It's question, it was question time, right?
No, but, the reason why I brought that up is because.
Policy Committee, trustee Vicente.
Good evening, everyone. Um, for the policy for first reading, we have policy zero one one five, student harassment and bullying prevention. Policy forty-three, twenty-one, twenty-five, confidentiality and access to individual educational programs. Uh, policy forty-three, twenty-seven, home violence instruction, and policy fifty-seven, tend to violate and disruptive incident reporting. That is for first reading. The board will receive those policies to review them. And then in the next agenda, um, if there's no revision, we'll come up for a second.
I believe everybody should have these policies already.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I just want to briefly give a state, uh, a report. Uh, on Tuesday, November twenty-first, the Policy Committee met, um, and to review, uh, the non-discrimination policy, the sexual harassment policy, uh, programs for students with disabilities, unsafe school transfers, alcohol and drug testing for bus drivers. And our next Policy Committee meeting is December eleven and ten A M.
Thank you, trustee Vicente. Facilities Committee, Vice President Cavallari.
Facilities Committee met today. Um, we had a very informative, uh, meeting with our new, that's what we want, Facility Director. Um, we have a game plan of how we're going to communicate moving forward. Uh, he gave us some outlook of his new ideas, um, and some current projects that he's doing and what he's just started, uh, implementing. Um, probably would like to know, uh, two projects that, you know, are eager to the, the roof in the orchestra here at the D E V, um, is in progress, um, and also the wheel of playground repairs. The wheels are in motion for that to start happening in as well. And, um, that concludes the facility.
I have a question for the, um, facilities.
Okay.
Um, back on, uh, was it July third, I guess? No, it was actually July, yeah, July, I'm sorry, October third, uh, about six weeks ago, um, I wrote to the board's attention the, um, sidewalk. It's like a raised sidewalk of four inches. That's like, uh, six weeks ago. Um, I, I looked at it again this week, and it still, uh, basically has a cement patch. And then a week after that, uh, the tenth of October, what's your attention, the ten-foot stretch of sidewalk, the old Wheeler, um, avenue at Willow School. I mean, the children might they go for buses and handle the buses right along that path, the sidewalk. You know, we have like two million dollars in basically unassigned dollars, I think, George, right? Like petty cash, I guess you refer to it as loose money that's unassigned, about two million. How come we can't get that done? How can we, how can we take, I'm sorry, well, uh.
I'm not quite sure.
This time, hand of cash. I'm sorry, what?
Oh, my God.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm not quite sure it's petty cash, trustee.
Not, well, I'm kidding, petty, petty cash, but two million dollars in, uh, unassigned funds, meaning that that money is there available to unexpected expenses.
Yeah, well, we haven't received an update as of yet from, I know the architect is working with the village because the sidewalk, there's a tree where the, um, where that raised concrete is, um, and we did a temporary repair, uh, as far as I know. Um, there was a continuation with the architect meeting with the village, um, and that's in progress as well. And once that gets resolved, the, that would, that other side of the Willow Avenue sidewalk will be all in the scope of work, um, as well.
What, what's, what specifically was throwing me, um, if we have that money available, one big quarter of the architect, we can just go to a local contractor?
That's not how the board work, I mean, that's not how school districts work. We just don't hire, they have to get, they have to go through a process, trust me.
No, my understanding about the school board's work is that the district can actually, uh, repair a concrete sidewalk if it's less than thirty-five thousand dollars, you're not even talking about the bid, so what do you?
We, we have a tree that's involved, the building seems to be involved. We are looking into planting more trees. There's a little more. Right now, there's no immediate danger. There's a repair, uh, that is taking care of the immediate danger, and we are looking into other, into the options. I, I, I apologize if you don't like the answer, but that is the answer.
I'm sorry, that's.
And we will, we will look more into it, um, but that is the answer at the moment, so.
I also think it's very irresponsible to pour concrete now. It's coming winter. Aren't there like temperature requirements?
We, 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 but it is a problem.
No, this is actually one of the better times to pour concrete. It's an exothermic operation, wouldn't want to. In any event, I would invite the public to look at the, uh, that, that.
Thank you, trustee Fadelli. All right, we will take that further to the facilities.
Moving on, uh, President, Vice President Cavallari to the Committee of全体, please.
Oh, back on, okay. Um, Committee of全体, uh, like to move item one, standard workday resolution, twenty twenty-three, amend. Amendment to standard workday and reporting. We resolved that the Board of Education of Valley Stream Union Free School District thirteen hereby amend the resolution of July fifth, twenty twenty-three, and hereby establish the following standard workday for these appointed officials and will report official to the New York State and local employees retirement system based on their recorded activities. Listened.
Second. Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move items K one to reset as a consent agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Thank you, trustee Cavallari. Vice President Cavallari, I apologize.
That's, I'm fine.
He'd love to call me president. Report to the attorney, Mr. Shishka.
Thank you. May I? My condolences, Mary. Tonight, I'll provide the board with a report regarding a matter of the job. Our office defended a, successfully defended the school district in an appeal brought by a parent requesting that they be treated as homeless, even though they didn't satisfy the definition of homeless. The commissioner denied the appeal, ruled that you must satisfy the legal definition of being homeless in order to be considered homeless at a given school or district.
Thank you. High school report?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Over the past month, all three schools celebrated Spirit Week and Homecoming. Central High School also celebrated their annual Pink Fair in honor of Breast Care Cancer Awareness Month. The North High School Ecology Club recently took to the streets of their local neighborhood to clean up litter and protect their environment. And in Valley Stream South High School, the Science Honor Society recently enjoyed, enjoyed the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to speak with an astronaut above the international, aboard the International Station, Station. So for more in-depth of those stories, you can check the Valley Stream Central High School website.
Thank you, trustee Farr. Old business.
President, I'm listening.
Okay, good.
I'd just like to remind all trustees that you're invited to the committees. Uh, Facility Committee was open, and we had a trustee who's not on the committee come and join. Um, Policy Committee, Education Committee, we're all open to all our board members. And to the public as well, yes.
To listen.
To listen. Committee chairs, well, we don't stifle. I don't stifle, but, but. But, yes. But yes, it's open to everybody, so, you know, welcome to come and, and, uh, listen in.
Is, is that also true for the, uh, uh, administration committees, like the one that was resuscitated tonight, the sixth grade committee?
I, I guess it was addressing the
Board committees.
Board committees, but just to work down, just, uh, just add on. Yeah, it's probably a question for that floor.
Trustees are not part of district committees.
So trustees are now allowed to attend the, like, the sixth grade committee? We can't attend that?
You want to go and help plan the sixth grade activities. I, I'm sure they'd like more hands.
Well, trustee Vicente brought up a fair issue, and that was earlier tonight, you know, regarding the transition to a Kowalski.
That's not really what the sixth grade committees do, but, uh, they plan to. That's not really what the sixth grade committees do, but, um, they plan events, they plan events for the sixth grade classes to kind of celebrate their moving up. And again, if you would like to participate in that, I would get in touch with the PTAs for each school and they could use as many hands as they can get.
Fantastic.
Trustee Capozio, old business?
Actually, I have two, uh, things. The first one, uh, was going to inquire, um, again, in the year we spoke about possibly including a writing law, but it seems like the Education Committee is going to speak about that, so I'll follow up with it next month. And then I had a question, do we have anyone currently taking on activities of literacy coach?
So we have, we, I sent home to the board information about hiring a coordinator of literacy and pre, uh, and of early childhood and literacy. Um, we're in the interview process. We, uh, have looked at resumes and we've invited some people to, uh, submit a video.
But, but like as of right now, is, is it just somebody who's working in the school who's?
Well, it's, it, well, it, it reverts back to Ms. McIntosh or Mr. Kloski because we don't have the coordinator, you know, because Mrs. Gervasi became the principal. But I know Mrs. Gervasi is still helping, you know, lending hand as well.
Okay.
So just the other administrators are covering for now.
Is that all, trustee Capozio?
That's all, sure.
Okay. Trustee Fadelli.
Uh, yes, Dr. Loraco, um, would I be, would the board be expecting the name of the individual who came with a gun as well as the name of the organization that you're going to work for?
I cannot provide the board with information that I don't have.
So you would never inform the, the name of the person, you know, or the organization?
Any other old business?
Yeah, I do. Um, so, uh, all right, actually, a request, I don't know, let me get easy if I just go right to a request. Um, I'm trying to get details on our transportation. As you know, it's four million miles this year and we were all informed last year there was a fourteen percent increase. I'm looking at possibly, maybe we have our own fleet, but there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. Is it possible I can actually speak to our?
The board, we, we need the whole board, it's not just you request.
No, I'm just asking, we need the will of the board that would need to look at the fleet. All right, so by policy, maybe Chris can help, by policy, is a trustee allowed to call an administrator on his own, independent of, you know, any kind of vote of the will of the board? I mean, can I pick up the phone and speak to the guy who handles our busing, our transportation operations? I mean, can I get up on my phone and talk to the principal? Well, should I just say I'm, I'm a taxpayer, I'd like to talk to the principal?
Should I ask the board if they want to give legal advice in public when you want to go into executive session? I can answer a question, just a question.
Let me poll the board, trustee Vicente.
On what?
Legal advice on trustee Fadelli's question, public or executive?
How many times we've discussed this?
Executive.
Executive.
Trustee Farrar.
Executive, it's legal.
Trustee Grossa.
Executive.
Trustee Capozio.
Executive.
Trustee Fadelli.
No, I was only going to.
Trustee, Vice President Cavallari.
Legal management, exec.
And I also believe legal matters are executive session, so please do.
Madam?
We may add this to our executive after the meeting.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question for Dr. Loraco. When we, when we put transportation on our budget, what normally, how do we determine the seating for the students?
We have our policy, transportation policy, and then we use a computer program that generates eligibility for ridership based on the parameters that are in the policy.
Right. And you said eligibility, so isn't it safe to say that we could have, that's just a random program, just going out there? I don't know the exact number by, by heart, but I know that you presented that information to us. Um, let's say we have forty students who qualify. Does it mean actually that all forty students take advantage of that busing?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Now, uh, when that happens in this district, what is it that we do to fill the buses? So, so we have forty and we don't?
So we have a policy on a walkback pass, so parents are able to apply for that program using an application on the district website. And then we use that same program to determine past the eligibility who can ride, who can get a bus pass.
So we, we get that?
But we have to reserve, we reserve, uh, ten percent of the availability on the bus in case somebody moves into the district who needs the policy's eligibility.
In the past four or five years, has that ever changed?
No.
How we determine all that and, and our policies and all that?
No.
In the past four or five years, has that ever changed?
No.
Thank you.
Any other old business?
Yeah, I'd just like to add a little statistic here as far as the busing goes. Uh, recently, I, well, recently, past performance of mass of course about busing, um, and Dr. Loraco informed the board that there's close to a thousand students that are eligible to take the bus, eligible. Um, the numbers that I'm finding is that we don't even bus half that amount, not even half the amount that we're paying for the services are we actually busing. Just wanted to share that. I'll, I'll give out specific numbers in the forthcoming months.
Uh, I'm sorry, trustee, I'm, I'm confused. So you're saying that the bus?
Kick the rest of the kids off? I'm confused.
So, can we, can we, do we recall that we would inform that there's about two hundred and fifty students that are eligible at Willow and Antoin?
I'm sorry, I, two hundred and fifty?
Eligible students for busing.
Yeah.
Do you, do you recall?
Okay.
Right, so would you be surprised that less than half the number of eligible students actually take the bus?
No, I, I wouldn't be surprised because.
Okay. Hey, so if you're willing to?
But. You would have to be.
We have to have those seats.
For eligible.
Oh, I, I never said you didn't.
So what's the point? What's the, what's the point? I don't, the, the, what's the point of it? That's what I'm trying to grasp.
Well, the point is, is that there's less than twenty-two students in the bus that has a capacity for sixty students. And even if you ignore the capacity of the bus, if you add ten percent of twenty-two, which is what?
But are you, I'm, because I'm a little confused there. So there's twenty-two kids on the bus for a number, but forty-four are eligible and the bus holds sixty. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, a little higher, actually.
Okay, and the numbers are in general. We cannot, as far as I understand, get rid of the twenty-two seats for the twenty-two that are not using.
We have, I thought it was ten percent?
No, ten percent is held for new students who may enter into the school district.
Throughout the year.
I don't want to detour from my original statement, uh, and that was basically, I'll just repeat it, uh, we have about a thousand, we were full by this.
I understand, I, I understood you correctly, but I understand now, thank you, appreciate it.
New business? No new business, okay. Listeners, do I have any sheets? Nobody wants to talk to us tonight? I know, red shirt ladies, you want to talk to us, I can tell you. All right, well, with that, I thank everybody for coming this evening and I hope to see you next month again.
All right, we got a motion for executive session.
Make a motion for executive session to discuss legal matters with the attorney and the superintendent.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll be going into executive in the boardroom.
Or we'll do it here.
No.
Oh, we're going to the boardroom. Thanks again, everybody for coming, thank you ladies, thank you in the past for coming.